Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the January 13th, 2020 meeting of the Sacramento County Planning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Good evening, Commissioner Martenson.
Here.
Polley.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Tatisi.
Here.
Shelby.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. I see a number of folks in the audience tonight. If you would like to speak on any item that's on the agenda, please sign up on the back tablet, and then we can call you as the item is called. For those that have signed in and wish to speak tonight, if you could please rise, and we'll all swear you in together.
Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this commission is the truth, so help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Okay, so we have to do a procedural item with the first item, so we'll call that, and we'll take a vote, and then move on.
Item number one is PLMP 2019-00081.
So the motion is to drop from the agenda. Chris, do you have?
Yeah, I'll just briefly say that staff is working on re-noticing this item for your next meeting.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
So are we moving to another date, or we're just dropping from the agenda, or table into another meeting?
No. It will. We needed to change the project description for the project, so we needed to re-notice it, but it will be coming back to your next meeting, which is on January...
27.
27.
Okay.
So the motion is to drop from this agenda?
There's no point in continuing it because you have to re-notice it.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Call our next item.
Item number two, PLMP 2018-00271, Use Permit Amendment and Design Review. Owner is 2200 Gramercy Drive LLC. Applicant is Greg Maedo Associates located at 2200 Gramercy Drive at the Terminus of Gramercy Drive north of Cottage Way in the Arden Arcade community. Environmental doc is exempt.
The item before the Planning Commission is the Gramercy Use Permit Amendment, item PLMP This project site is located at 2200 Gramercy Drive. It is at the Terminus of Gramercy Drive approximately 500 feet north of Cottage Way in the Arden Arcade community. The request is an amendment to existing use permit 86 UP 1166, and the amendment proposes to increase the number of assisted living beds at an existing facility from 55 to 85, and modify condition of approval number 20 of that use permit, which would require the pedestrian gates to be for emergency egress only. This project is also a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. On the aerial to your right side of the slide, the project site itself is the red hashed. The off-site parking that we will discuss later in this presentation is the blue hashed. This is the site plan that shows the existing facility, and it is existing. The buildings are there. There are 65 onsite parking spaces that are also there. Gramercy Drive or Court is located at the bottom portion of your screen, and El Prado Way is located on the east and west sides of that site plan, and it terminates into the project site. So there are pedestrian gates for ingress and egress currently, and there are also gates for emergency access vehicles as well. And as we do note and discuss later, the pedestrian gates are proposed currently to be for emergency egress only. So the plan on the left-hand side of the slide again shows the existing site and the existing onsite parking spaces, and the slide on the right shows the off-site parking spaces that are proposed to be accommodated under this project. And the off-site parking spaces are located in a office complex which is located to the south along Gramercy Drive. It is actually located on Cottage Way. Again, this is an amendment to an existing use permit, and what it proposes to do is increase the number of beds from 55 to 85 for the assisted living. So it would be an increase by 30 for a total of 205 beds. It will also amend condition 20, requiring pedestrian access gates on El Prado, which again is on the east and west sides of the project site. And those gates were originally intended to permit pedestrian access through the facility for neighborhood connectivity. However, currently, the neighbors have indicated that the gates are being used by employees to access the facility when they're parking in the neighborhood. So as part of this request, the applicant has asked that those gates be modified to be for emergency egress only. Okay, the final hearing body for this is the Board of Supervisors. So tonight, the Planning Commission would be making a recommendation to the board. The subject property is currently developed with a 175-bed convalescent or assisted living complex, which has 65 associated onsite parking spaces. The facility was constructed in 1991. So to make you aware, that beginning in 2017, per staff began receiving correspondence from the neighbors regarding this facility, and they had indicated that the employees of the facility were parking in front of residences within the neighborhood. There are also letters from May and June of 2018, which is Attachment 3 of your staff report, that did raise issues regarding the facility. They talked about exceeding the number of beds that were permitted under the use permit, that the facility was not among the activities that they were occurring were not permitted by the use permit, and they did request that the Planning Director initiate revocation of that use permit. The Planning Director did respond in writing, providing responses to their letters, and that is also included as Attachment 3 of your staff report, and that report does detail how we consider the beds, what we consider to be the number of permitted beds, and how to initiate revocation. So associated with this, again, is 30 beds, but they're also asking for three more employees for a total of 170, and this would be over three shifts. Okay, the applicant is providing off-site parking at a separate property, which was in the blue hash, and they are leasing office space and 36 parking spaces at 2775 Cottage Way. So what happens is, in order to meet the required parking spaces proposed by their increase in beds, they are using the mechanisms that are permitted through our zoning code, which does allow you to provide off-site and on-street parking spaces. So what has occurred is the applicant is leasing the 36 spaces, which would be considered off-site in the adjacent office complex. Currently, that complex has an excess of 70 spaces, and so it will accommodate the 36 spaces which are being leased. The applicant is also leasing corresponding office space at the complex, and to ensure that it doesn't become underparked, the conditions of approval do require that to be used for storage. They are proposing 12 onsite parking spaces on Gramercy Court, and those are proposed to be used by visitors, which is how the zoning code is written. The other thing that we would note is that they are not proposing to try and utilize all of the available parking spaces that are on Gramercy Court. If you look at the more westerly side, there's approximately 24 parking spaces that could be parked, and they are requesting that they count 12 of those. So another thing to note is that, and we've discussed this in the history section of your staff report, that the amendment proposes to increase the number of beds through the county's use permit process to match what is currently permitted through the state. So tried to go through and summarize the parking and the parking counts that were required. So the prior zoning code parking for that existing use, the pre-2015, required one space per three beds for 175, and didn't require any employee parking requirements. So at the time it was permitted, they actually met the parking requirements. Under our current zoning code for that existing use, we currently require parking spaces for employees now. So one space per three employees at 167 would be 56 spaces. So under our current zoning code with our existing use, they would have been considered short. So the parking requirements for the additional beds through this proposed amendment is they're proposing to increase to 205 beds. So one space per three beds, that's 68 spaces. One space per three employees at 170, that's 57 spaces. So that requires the total of 125 spaces. So they are proposing to meet our parking requirements by proposing onsite combination of vehicle, bicycle, and motorcycle, as permitted by our zoning code. The off-site leased parking spaces in the adjacent office complex, which is 36, and then, as we said, they are proposing on-street parking for visitors at 12. So that's where we get the total of 125.
A quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I saw earlier that there are three shifts.
Yes.
So approximately 60 employees per shift, 125 parking spaces. So 65 parking spaces for visitors on all three shifts. I know it's not that pure, but...
Right.
And I know that's not how the code is written, because it doesn't consider shifts.
Correct.
But in practical application, it sounds like more than enough parking.
In practical application, it does, and you're correct, and I think their highest shift is around, is their daytime shift, and they're saying that's 64 employees that are attending. But the way our code is written, it's one space per three employees, so it's not based on a shift basis, it's based on the total number of employees. So that's how we have calculated it, and so that's how we came up with our 125.
Right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And so what I wanted to show you was this slide, which does specify the off-site parking locations in the Cottage Center. So the blue are sites that they have leased, and as well as yellow, so that's where we get the total of 36 leased spaces. So staff went through the existing use permit when they proposed to amend it, and we went through, and we modified condition 20 to be for the emergency egress only. And then there's condition 23, 24, 25, and 26, which specifically address the parking spaces that are proposed, the off-site parking spaces, and then the street parking. So we have placed those conditions on it to specifically address those. They have also provided us a parking management plan, which would indicate how they are proposing to deal with both their onsite parking, the on-street parking, and then who will basically be asked to utilize the 36 off-site parking spaces. So they have provided that to us, because staff wanted to make sure that not only were they being provided, but they were being utilized as well. And so this did go to the Arden Arcade CPAC on June 27th of last year to consider their request. There were members of the public that spoke. They talked about inadequate onsite parking. They had asked that the wood fence be replaced with a masonry wall, and then they did provide letters and a petition regarding the project, and they were largely opposed to the project. So the CPAC did vote to recommend that the board deny the use permit amendment, and a large part of their concern was relying on on-street parking on Gramercy Drive to make up the parking numbers. So I did want to make the Planning Commission aware that since that time, the applicant did lease additional onsite or parking spaces in the office complex, and then they reduced the number that they were proposing to utilize on-street by that same number. So originally, they were proposing around 24 on-street. They leased an additional 12 in the office complex, and then they reduced it by 12. So that being said, staff is recommending approval of this project, and we are recommending that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that the project be recognized as being exempt, that the use permit amendment be approved subject to the draft findings and conditions in Attachment 2, and that the project be found in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Any questions of staff? Go ahead.
I have one question. I'm just trying to follow the logic with staff on why they're recommending the approval, because it seems to me, as I go through this, that there's an issue with compliance with this particular property. We hear a lot of complaints from the community. They're asking now to even expand beyond where they're at today, and so just missing, like, why, is it just to, do we take that into consideration too, when we're thinking about what our recommendation's going to be? Or is it purely, do they have parking, do they not have parking? Just curious how you got from...
Yeah, I think it's certainly part of the analysis, it's performed by staff, and we took into account the concerns that were being brought up at the CPAC meeting and from surrounding residents, and continued to work with the applicant to provide more parking to address the concerns, and to come to a point where they are able to show that they're meeting the parking requirements as required in the zoning code, and staff felt comfortable recommending approval and being able to recommend that the findings that are needed to bring this amendment forward could be made.
So I think what I'm hearing is that the main issue was parking. Think that as you've gone through it, the parking has really, the parking plan is not adequate, that it will suffice a lot of the neighbors' concerns around this particular...
Well, previously, the issue had been, had been parking. I think staff feels that with the addition of the lease of the off-site parking, the inclusion, which LeAnn mentioned during her presentation, of a parking management plan, which is also conditioned to be followed as part of the project, I think staff believes that the, that the parking issue has been addressed sufficiently by the applicant.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Hi, LeAnn.
Hi, Commissioner Ham.
Quick question. Is there any reason why staff didn't recommend pedestrian closure along the other streets also, because there's a number of streets that dead-end onto the site, but you're only asking for one of them to be closed off for pedestrian access?
It's because it's our understanding, well, Gramercy is a court, so there's no, there's no gates there.
Right, I get that.
And then, so there's basically El Prado, and then there's one more to the north, and it's our understanding that those two are the ones that were mainly being used and were identified as being the most problematic gates.
I thought there were more than, there's two other streets that are tied into the site, right?
So there's one, there's one at the north, and then there's the El Prado, which deadens at the east and west sides, and then there's one more, which is more of like a half cul-de-sac.
Right, that's Via Way, right? And then there's Parkway Drive?
Mm-hmm. So it was our understanding, based on, that's what the applicant had asked for, and it was our understanding that that one, the El Prado, was the main issue with pedestrian access and people utilizing that to park in the surrounding neighborhood and then utilizing the pedestrian gates to access the facility.
That was because of the request of the neighborhood, okay. And then two other questions. The parking management plan is not part of the conditions of approval. Is there any reason why you didn't base that part of the conditions?
So we make reference to it as that they have to substantially comply with it as part of Attachment 4.
Okay, so it is referenced in, as a condition, okay.
Yes.
And then, did you guys take a look at shift change? Because when you have shift change, you've got two people there.
Mm-hmm.
So granted, after shift change, you have the parking count changes, but during shift change, there's an issue.
And, yeah, and so that's, we did actually consider that, and that's why we felt that by basing the number of parking spaces off of the total number of employees versus per shift, that our zoning code had adequately thought of that already, because it's based, it's not based on like the highest number of shifts or, to that effect, it's based on the total number of employees, and it's one per three based upon that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, thank you. We'll bring the applicant up.
Madam Chair, members of Commission, Marcus Laduka. I have been sworn on behalf of the Gramercy Court owner and operator, Generations Healthcare. I'm pleased to be before you this evening with the recommendation of approval from your staff for what is really a relatively minor change to the operations of the Gramercy Court project. Staff report and the presentation tonight have done a very good job of summarizing our request and a good overview of what we, what the issues are, so I would just like to highlight a few items, if I might. To begin with, Generations Healthcare became the owner-operator in July of 2016, so anything you hear about items that may, matters that may have been, occurred before that time does not involve the applicant before you. The project before you tonight, as staff noted, involves no construction. The building is built and has been built to accommodate what was approved in 1987, but also licensed by the State of California Department of Social Services, which was for 85 assisted living beds and 120 skilled nursing beds in the facility. That's been in operation, the 55 that were permitted by the use permit have been in operation since 1991. Since my client is owned and operated, there have never been more than 55 residents in the assisted living portion of the project in full compliance with the use permit. I would note, in response to Commissioner Ham's comments and Commissioner Shelby's comments, that there have not been violations found under the use permit. There's a letter in your packet from Plan Director LeAnn Moffett in response or comments from a neighbor that, in fact, we're in compliance with the use permit and are not in, out of compliance with that, and the operation since Generations has been operating the facility. So what we're really looking to do is to match the use permit on the assisted living portion with what our state permit has been, and also with how it was constructed. It's constructed to accommodate 85 beds. The unique aspect of the project before you tonight is that the conditions requiring additional parking have already been implemented. Since the middle of May, when we had two neighborhood meetings, and we noticed those neighborhood meetings 2,000 feet from the property, so we wanted to make sure we got everyone who possibly could be interested. We added off-site parking, that was, as noted on the map, right there at the adjacent to Gramercy Court there, to be able to address concerns that were raised by our neighbors about employee parking in their neighborhood. Combine that with the vigorous implementation of the parking management plan by the project administrator. What we have found with the additional 24 off-site parking spaces that were acquired starting in the middle of May, that from comments from residents is that we had addressed the employee parking in their neighborhood, which has been the issue all along. Again, that enforcement, as you note in the staff report, involves assigning employees to spaces, so it's not just saying, you know, "Go park off-site," but it's also assigning spots, as well as regular monitoring of employee parking. And again, it's through that parking management plan that is referenced in the staff report and is required as part of the conditions of approval. Adjacent residents informed my client that the additional off-site parking by the middle, by the end of May with the parking management plan had addressed the issues of employee parking in front of their homes. That was the key issue. The CPAC, as was noted, had issues with on-street parking on Gramercy Drive by employees. Even though that is allowed by our existing use permit, it is allowed by county code, that was the key basis of the CPAC recommendation. So after that CPAC meeting at the end of June, your staff asked us if there was any way we could acquire additional parking to eliminate employee on-street parking and have that just for visitors. My client then acquired the right, as was noted on the map in yellow, to acquire the additional 12 spaces in that parking lot. My client is leasing office space in that building, not for employees, which would generate their own need for parking, but for storage. So basically, the project before you now includes the on-street parking for visitors, the 36 additional parking spaces, but only three additional employees to address the additional 30 assisted living beds. The questions about shifts, I think were a good one from Commissioner Ham, relative to what we see in terms of the parking being provided, 125 spaces versus what you'll see. The busiest shift is during the day, when we also have administrative staff, office staff that are there, not staff tending to residents, and so we're looking at usually around 60 to 65 employees at that time. The afternoon is usually in the 40, 40 range, is in the PM, the evening shift, and then it drops down to 20 employees at the graveyard shift, in essence. So even when you have an overlap, you still have an excess of parking. We did a parking survey a couple summers ago, and it found that, in fact, all parking is not being used. So I think the issue is really a function of making sure we can right-size this to what your parking code now requires. As staff noted, we're also asking that condition 20 be revised to close the pedestrian gates, and there are only two. There aren't three or four gates. There's only two pedestrian gates in the facility, and those are on El Prado, east and west. Those are required by our existing use permit to be open at all times, so our neighbors have requested that those be for emergency egress only, and that is the way the revised condition is stated. I would also note, my client is eliminating outpatient services, including physical therapy, as well as eliminating 10 daycare assisted living beds that have been allowed in the use permit since 1987. So again, in conclusion, the facility before you has already, has been owned and operated totally for almost 30 years now. So regardless of what you might hear tonight, or you saw on the agenda packet, letters regarding the original permit was not, did not allow the uses that are, have been operating on the site for those 30 years. In fact, as your Plan Director noted in her letter back to the one resident, that in fact, those uses are entirely permitted by your code. We're not here to talk about whether the use is, should have been approved back in 1987, or can be removed, because it cannot. It's existing, it's operating. It's really a function of the facility now being, meeting current county codes. I would note that the proposal before you includes parking under your current code for the entire facility. We're not affecting the skilled nursing portion, the 120 beds, in any way, and yet that facility, that portion of the project is being required to meet current codes. The parking solution, again, it's been implemented. It's been successful. The idea now is, if you deny the proposal, that off-site parking disappears. You don't have the 36 spaces. The gates remain open, and people continue to park in the neighborhood, which is what our neighbors were most concerned about with the existing project as is. So we would ask that you approve the project as presented to you, as conditioned by your staff, in the staff report... staff in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission might have. We would like the opportunity to address any comments that come up during the public hearing, Madam Chair.
Sure, thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
Um, I have one, or?
Go ahead.
I want to go on record, I did talk to Mr. Laduka on the conference call earlier, so, anyway. Good evening, Marcus. So on, uh, on the two east and west access points, the man-gates, they're going to be closed off on both sides of the property.
Correct, they'll be for emergency egress only, and that's a requirement of the fire department, that they be for emergency egress.
And there's no man-gates on Parkwood or La Via?
No, no pedestrian gates. Correct, there's no pedestrian gates there.
That was it, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open the public comment period. I have a few speakers, starting with Michael Seaman.
Thank you, my name's Michael Seaman, I have been sworn, I live at 2837 Marywood. You know, this facility should never have been approved in the first place. It has caused problems ever since its inception. It was, it's an abuse of the neighborhood, it was done against strong opposition, even though the neighborhood urged putting the facility a few hundred feet away. Meanwhile, the state made mistakes by putting in different numbers of beds and purposes. Well, years went by and the neighborhood has lived with the facility and sees it as an integral part of the community. However, the fence is in shambles. We wanted it to be a block wall, it should have been a block wall. We predicted the fence, the wood fence would fall down, it did. Employee parking has plagued the neighborhood, it's been a serious problem. The new owner has been very cooperative and we really appreciate that. The staff report contends that the project conforms to the general plan. Well frankly, the Arden Arcade Community Plan is a joke and is seriously out of date. Further, our neighborhood's always had a mix of housing types, a serious mix of housing types. You've got duplexes, single-family houses, apartments, all mixed up together. Meanwhile, here we are today, making the gates emergency exits only, it's a good thing. Appreciate that. They should be alarmed, so they won't be propped open by conniving employees. And we think that, that closing the gates will solve problems for El Prado and Landon and Park Estates. But the proposal does not solve the parking problem. The CPAC was right to deny the use permit. The onsite motorcycle and bicycle spaces are fake solutions. The off-site spaces are inadequate, they need more off-site spaces. And using 12 onsite, or on-street spaces for visitors is not only inadequate, but it's also impractical. I don't know how you enforce it. And if, if any of you have ever had to take your parents or friends to a neighborhood, elderly people to a nursing home or an assisted living facility, you know that you don't park far away from the front door. You try to park as close to the front door as you can, because the, your friend or your relative may want to get in and out of the vehicle. So further, parking problems are going to continue on La Mesa Way. There's been no solution whatsoever for the, for La Mesa. Thank you.
Mr. Seaman, if I could ask you a question, please, sir? I want to make sure I'm clear on your request. Do you feel like by denying their request to add 30 beds, that that would have solved the parking problem?
I honestly don't know how you solve the parking problem, because frankly, the facility should not have been shoehorned into the neighborhood years ago. And, I mean, you could have predicted that these sort of problems would come up, that the new owner would need to expand in order to make money, that's reasonable understanding from business practice. And, and whatever impacts there were before, you make them bigger when you have more employees. And, and our neighborhood has horrible public transit, doesn't have sidewalks in a lot of places. I mean, the only way practically to get around is in a car. And we know from experience that the employees who work there tend to live fairly far away. They are commuters, they're distant commuters. So they're driving long distances, they're looking to park, and they wind up conflicting with the parking problems that the federal building has. I don't know if the staff told you, but there's a major federal building right, right at Gramercy and Cottage. And, you know, sometimes there are large crowds attracted there for various reasons. So there are employees and visitors at the federal building. The apartments, the Hacienda Way apartments, don't have adequate parking. You know, part of the housing solution these days is a lot of people cram into apartments, they share spaces. So what was adequate 20, 30 years ago for apartments isn't, isn't adequate now. There are apartment people, there are employees at the car dealers who, who park on Hacienda and on Gramercy. And now that, that the empty lots have been replaced by some, on Gramercy have been replaced by some very nice duplexes, they're, they're attractive residences. The parking problems just have gotten worse and worse and worse. Now, maybe one way to solve it is to have more designated off-site spaces. I can't speak for the business plan of the owner, but I can say they've, they've been nice, they've been cooperative, and, and I hope they can solve it. But you can't solve it by saying, oh, we use those onsite, on-street spaces.
So, so the 36 spaces that are designated in the, the adjacent building, you're, you're comfortable?
Oh, that's a big step in the right direction, but it's not enough.
It's the 12 on-street spaces that you're concerned about?
Well, and also the fake, the, the alleged, the allegation made in the staff report that people will, employees or visitors will come on motorcycles and bicycles to the site is baloney. So that was, that was a fake calculation. The 12 spaces on the street are a problem. And the phony claim that you don't need as many onsite spaces because there'll be lots of people riding motorcycles and bikes is a problem.
Okay, thank you.
The way the calculation was brought around. And, and the CPAC, I was at the CPAC meeting and they agonized over this. And then they said, oh, the heck with it, this makes no sense.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move on. Next, we have Suzanne Seaman.
My name is Suzanne Seaman, and I have been sworn. I just want to speak on the parking, on-street parking, again. From what they've said, it sounds like they feel they've implemented this management of the parking already. My daughter lives on La Mesa, and I live on Marywood, so I walk down Gramercy to get to La Mesa. Just on Friday, I was walking down Gramercy and an employee was coming out of the facility walking, and she was obviously an employee, she had on clothes that looked like kind of medical stuff, and she had a big bag she was carrying with a water bottle and stuff. She came out of the facility, and I'm on the side of the street where the, the new homes are. Because the, the side of the street opposite where the 36 places will be is all homes now. It used to be empty, but now it's fully residential. And she came out of there, walked up to her car, parked on that side of the street. I'm not blaming her, because if I worked there, that's what I would do too. Then my daughter, who's on La Mesa, sees employees on La Mesa all the time. So I don't see how they can police on-street parking by the employees or visitors. And I, I think adding more beds, unless all those people are just lonely old people who don't have any visitors, they're going to have more of a problem with that, that the 36 spaces aren't going to solve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Michael Tanzi.
Good evening, my name is Michael Tanzi, and I've been sworn in. I live at 2250 Park Estates Drive. My property is adjacent to one of the gates that we were discussing having, being for emergency egress only. And I fully support that, because prior to the meetings we had with Dan Bushnell and the Gramercy Court folks, the parking situation there was very intolerable. Lots of things happened that weren't very pleasant. I did submit in writing a letter with comments, and I just wanted to verify that the staff received that correspondence. Okay, great, thank you. One, I think the thing that kind of concerns me, and maybe it's because I'm not very knowledgeable about the law and permits and things like that, is that the solution here that we're looking at is a lease of parking spaces at a commercial property. And what happens, you know, if for some reason or another, that commercial property, you know, doesn't want to or can't provide that parking? Then what's going to happen? And I don't think, what I've heard tonight, or what I've seen, which by the way, I couldn't get the presentation that was presented, so I would like to receive that, I gave you my email. You know, so, you know, what's going to happen? How is this a solution? I don't know. But I think that's something you should consider in making your decision. Because I plan to live there for a long time. And I'm concerned about the future, I'm concerned about the value of my property, because I couldn't have sold my property two years ago, because it was really bad. Okay, so my time is out. Just one last thing I would like to say. I thought your point about the egress gate, since we're making the all pedestrian, the two Park Estates gates, pedestrian gates for emergency egress only, maybe it would be a good idea to stipulate that the other street that comes into the property, should it ever have, a pedestrian gate would also only be for emergency egress. Thank you very much. I'll answer any questions if you have them.
I think we're good, thank you.
Okay.
Like to call the applicant back up?
If I could, Madam Chair, respond to a few of the comments on the fence. My client's basically replaced not, over 90% of the fence at a cost of a couple hundred thousand dollars already, and they'll be completing the rest of it. So that fence has been replaced. The county does not require residential type uses adjacent to other residential uses, at least my experience over the last several decades, a masonry wall anywhere in the county. So that would be a significant code change that you would be looking to implement if that were to be considered for the project. With regard to the parking, how do you enforce parking to allow visitor parking close to the facility entrance, so people are not parking down the street? It's because we have assigned parking. 36 employees are required to have assigned spots where they're parking in the off-site parking spaces. That frees up, again, 65 parking spaces onsite. There aren't that number of employees anywhere near that, even on the busiest shift. So there are a lot of parking spaces. And again, our, in the file, our parking study that was done showed exactly that, there's spaces empty onsite for visitor parking. With regard to the bicycle and motorcycle parking that's allowed by your code, I would hope you would want to give credit for that, otherwise that sends quite a signal to the development community that in fact, you don't get credit for having bicycle parking in a facility. On, with regard to what happens if the parking spaces go away, your staff wrote the conditions, if you look at condition, it's 2024, if the parking spaces go away, the 30 assisted living beds are deemed to have expired. So you don't come back to the commission and say, hey, can we still do that? They expire. So my client has a tremendous incentive to keep those parking spaces in place, because otherwise they lose the 30 beds. So, and right now, we have a waiting list for both uses. I would note, when, the comment about the bicycle, we do have people in the, in the neighborhood who have been residents from time to time in the facility. Sometimes it's husband and wife, it's actually couples that come in to be able to be close to their friends and their neighborhood that can be residents at the, at the facility. So this is something that we hope that the conditions is drafted, meet your requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions that may have been generated out of the public or anything else, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll open our discussion and deliberation period, and I'll take the privilege of the chair and start, if you don't mind. I actually just had recently the experience of putting my 94-year-old grandmother into an assisted living facility and touring a bunch of facilities in Sacramento, and I'll tell you, and also my husband's parents are on their way there as well, that there is a need out there, and I think we'll probably, we need more in the county, is just my own personal assessment. So permitting of the beds also seems like it's fortuitous in the sense that it triggers the facility up to, has to meet our current code and compliance in addressing the legitimate and viable concerns of the neighbors. And it sounds like, from my perspective tonight, that the applicant has done their due diligence in meeting that obligation. So I will be pleased to support the project tonight, but interested in the discussion and deliberations of my fellow commissioners.
I guess I'll go next. In my opinion, the original site was code compliant at the time of implementation. Code changed, and how I look at things, if the code changes, apply that to the expansion portion. If I look at it that way, we're, we have adequate parking, because I'm only looking at the added beds and potentially three added staff members. I know that it's probably that comment may not be totally well-received by the neighborhood, but I think it's a fair solution, and the applicant seems like it, they've gone beyond that to add additional stalls beyond what I would have asked for. So I would say I would support this approval.
Other folks?
Well, no, yeah, we're not here today to talk about the original usage of the, of the properties, that's not for a discussion. If we look at the solution today, I think it actually improves it a little bit from, from, from what we have today, and so that's why I support the proposal.
I concur with everything else that's being said, and I would be prepared to make a motion.
I move to approve a staff recommendation to ask the Board of Supervisors to approve as conditioned.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Our next item, please.
Item number three. PLMP 201800320, zoning ordinance amendment, minor use permit, special development permit, and design review. Wildflower Solar Land Holdings LLC, care of Light Source BP. Applicant is Javier de la Garza, located west of the West U Street and West Sixth Street intersection in the Realinda, Alberta community. Environmental document is addendum to a prior mitigated negative declaration.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'll be presenting the presentation for the Wildflower Solar Project. The project site is comprised of four parcels and is bounded by West Sixth Street and the western terminus of West U Street to the east, and the Western Pacific Railroad tracks and the Natomas East Main Drainage Pond to the west. The project site is approximately 91 acres and is zoned heavy industrial with areas of flood combining overlay, which correspond to the locations of tributaries from the drain pond on the project site. Parcels surrounding the project site are primarily vacant or contain existing public, utility, industrial, and residential uses. Considerations to develop the project site for energy generating purposes date back to 1994. In 1994, the Board approved entitlements to allow a cogeneration power plant and ethanol manufacturing facility on the project site. Subsequently, the Board approved a zoning agreement amendment to amend a condition to reflect changes in the CEC requirements. This project, known as the SEPCO project, was never constructed, however, the zoning agreement remained in effect on the project. agreement remained in effect on the project site. In 2009, a request was received to develop the project site with a utility-scale renewable solar energy facility. Because the zoning agreement limited the use of the project site to that of a power plant and ethanol manufacturing facility, the zoning agreement required amending. In 2010, the Board released the project site from the conditions and obligations imposed by the prior zoning agreement, and a new zoning ordinance was adopted. A special development permit was also approved to allow a photovoltaic solar energy facility on the project site. This project, known as the North Sacramento Solar Project, was also never constructed. The special development permit expired, however, the zoning ordinance remained in effect on the project site. The project site was purchased by the current applicant in November of 2018, and the applicant intends to develop the site with a photovoltaic solar energy facility consistent with the use permitted by the zoning ordinance in effect. However, in reviewing the project plans, per determined that a substantial compliance fighting cannot be made with respect to the North Sacramento Solar Project due to primarily the modified footprint of the current project proposal compared to the prior approved project. As such, the current project proposal requires the following entitlement requests. A zoning ordinance amendment for the previously stated reason, a minor use permit to allow a 15-megawatt commercial two-solar facility on approximately 91 acres in the M2 and M2 flood combining zoning district. And a clarification to note is that, at the time, the currently in effect zoning ordinance was adopted for the project site, a solar energy facility use was not a specific use recognized in the zoning code at the time. There's no defined entitlement process for this, and as such, use-specific conditions were placed on the zoning ordinance. As part of the comprehensive update to the zoning code in 2015, an entitlement process, that is the minor use permit, was identified for permitting solar energy facilities in the heavy industrial zoning district. So, with this current entitlement request, all identified use-specific conditions and mitigation measures would be placed on the minor use permit, and the conditions limiting the zoning of the project site would remain on the zoning ordinance. In addition, a special development permit is requested to allow deviations from the street tree requirements on West Sixth, landscape screening and fencing requirements adjacent to agres parcels abutting the project site, and bicycle parking requirements as well as design review. The project proposes to construct a 15-megawatt photovoltaic solar energy facility located on 65 acres of the 91-acre total project site. Development of the, of the project would entail solar panels, associated power collection converter and distribution systems, a driveway from West Sixth Street and internal access roads, as well as fencing along the perimeter of the subject, of the project site. The solar panels would be dark blue or black in color and covered with an anti-reflective coating. Sunlight captured by the solar panels would be converted to electricity and flow through the equipment in the inverter stations and switch yards on the project site. An access to the project site is proposed by a 30-foot-wide gated driveway from West Sixth Street. From the driveway, the internet access road would be 20-foot wide. New fencing around the subject parcel would consist of either seven-foot-tall chain-linked fence with barbed wire or tubular steel fencing. Along the project site's frontage with West Sixth Street, the seven-foot-tall steel fence would be placed behind a landscape planter area ranging from 15 to 40 feet in width. The landscaping would consist of densely planted shrubs ranging from five to eight feet in height to help with screening, and the shrubs would be located on a raised berm of approximately two feet in height. This slide also provides visual simulations of the views from West Sixth Street and are showing the landscaping as well as the driveway. The final hearing body for the project is the Board. The project is consistent with the general plan and applicable community plan. General findings can be made in support of the requested deviations. The project would be compatible with the similar public utility industrial uses in the surrounding neighborhood. In regards to the residential uses, the project is not anticipated to generate any noise, traffic, or odors that would be incompatible with these residential uses. The environmental coordinator determined that the prior environmental document prepared for the North Sacramento Solar Project remains applicable to the current project proposal, and such an addendum to the prior ISMND was prepared to update the existing conditions where new information is available and to disclose impacts from project modifications. The addendum identified that the project would not result in new significant environmental impacts with the implementation of mitigation and mitigation measures identified in the previous initial study and MND. Both DRAK and the Rio Linda, Rio Linda CPAC recommends approval of the project. As previously discussed, considerations to develop the project site for energy generating purposes date back to 1994, which permitted a cogeneration power plant and ethanol manufacturing facility on the project site. With technical, logical advances and an emphasis in clean energy sources, the energy generating facilities considered for the project site shifted towards solar energy in 2009. These attempts to develop an energy generating use on the project site are memorialized in prior zoning agreements and the current zoning ordinance in effect on the project site. The project site has historically been underutilized and it remains vacant. The project will accommodate new sources of renewable energy to help energy providers meet the requirements of state law for renewable sources. As such, staff is recommending approval, and per recommends that the planning commission make the following recommendations to the Board. Staff is happy to answer any questions, and the applicant team is also here and available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay, we'll bring the applicant up.
Good evening, Commissioners. Javier De La Garza, Light Source BP. On behalf of Wildflower Solar, first of all, thank you very much for, for hearing us tonight. It's been a long time coming, and I would like to really extend my thanks to the, the planning staff, did a wonderful job in guiding us through the process and getting us to where we are today. So, big thanks for, especially Jesse, who pushed us towards the end. We are in agreement with the staff report as presented. I, I don't have any additional comments to make about the project, but we can make myself as well as other team members available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? All right. Comments, questions, motions?
Move to recommend to the Board of Supervisor approval of all of staff's recommendations and conditions.
I'll second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Who we got next? Planning Director's Report? I see her back there.
I don't think we have any Planning Director's Report today.
Okay. Any scheduling matters to talk?
I don't think so, the next meeting is-
We'll be meeting the next few, few meetings. There won't be any canceled planning commission meetings. You may see a couple of more inquiries from the clerk's office about scheduling. We do have two pending appeals, and so it's going to be important to both the applicant and to planning staff that we have a full five-member body for those appeals, so.
Okay. I do not see any other public comment, so we are adjourned. Okay.